Good evening and welcome to the February 26, 2024, special work session of the Mayor and Council and Planning Commission. Tonight, we're going to talk about the, our zoning code. We're going to take a deep dive into our retool project and I'm going to hand it over to Rob Robinson to lead us.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, members of the council and members of the commission. Just to let you know, joining me at the table, Greg Mann, our Community Planning Manager, and from our consultant zone code, Joe Helferney. If you had asked me 14 months ago, almost, if I would be here, I would have said, sure. We are ecstatic to be here this evening. We're really out to let you guys bring up, you know, where we are with the full, complete draft before entering the public hearing process. So just as a quick refresher, you know, why did we do this? As we had mentioned, you know, 14 months ago or plus, the last time our zoning ordinance was comprehensively looked at was 1965. 1965 was a very different world than the world of today. And we've done, you know, a patchwork of reactionary or, you know, Band-Aid text amendments over the successive decades to do something. So we finally got to the point where we realized, you know, let's, you know, move forward, especially before we begin our next land use element. Let's, let's get a sense of where we're going with things. So as is shown on the slide, you know, cities are always changing. Gaithersburg's changed, you know, in 1965, you know, there really was nothing on the west side. And we had decades of growth through annexations and things like that. We're a different city now. We're looking at how best to deal with infill and redevelopment more so than, than greenfield development. Because of that, you know, zoning, we feel should reflect our policies and goals. You know, we, a couple of years ago, started the new strategic plan, you know, zoning should reflect those things. And zoning should be easy to use. We've heard for years, you know, people get intimidated by it. It's not user friendly, you know, every homeowner, business owner, worker, politician, anybody coming through should be able to look at our zoning ordinance and get an understanding of how things work. So last time we were before you was October 9th, where we presented, you know, a very long, dry work session, you know, all the proposed changes. And while we got buy-in, there was some direction that we received. One of the things was, you know, the council and the planning commission wanted to make sure prior to these work sessions, that the draft be released, you know, at least three weeks prior. So again, we released it February 6th, 20 days instead of 21. And also, the planning commission and the council had talked about, because this is so needy, could we have, you know, a document to sort of help synthesize? So we created, you know, what we're calling the Cliff Notes or the summary report. And while it's only 40 pages, that's better than the 280 of the zoning ordinance, where we really tried to do something. So those are all done. Things were released February 6th, did a huge media blast, social media blast, press release, emails out to everybody who had signed up on the project page, emails out to everybody we invited to participate in a focus group. We will get more into that March 11th is our second work session. I wanted to right up front say, this evening, we really want to present you the overview. As we go along, we're happy to answer questions, but if there's a topic that you really want to dig your teeth into, we're going to put a pin on it and, and bring it back March 11th. March 11th, we also want to discuss where we sit with what engagement efforts occurred after the October 9th work session, let you know where things stand, and bring forward any comments we've received up to that point. That was the goal that council had directed us during the last work session. Also, any proposed changes, you know, we want to bring forward and get guidance from both your bodies to make sure that when we come back April 15th for the joint, you know, joint public hearing, it's the draft that basically everybody's in agreement with. There, there's no more real changes per se. So as you can see on the calendar, where we are, we're wrapping this up. We're hoping to have this adopted in July, July 15th, I think, in fact, is, you know, our calendar date. So if everything goes smoothly, retool will be effective, what is it, the first week and a half or 10 days into August. So before I turn it over to Joe to really walk you through the document, I want to make sure everybody's up to speed, that there's really two sets of goals with retool. There's technical goals and there's policy goals. And this evening and what you saw in the packet, I want to make clear, every change may not address every goal, but every change addresses a goal, be it technical or policy. The technical goals, as we talked about, leading into, you know, making it more user friendly, improve the organization and usability, incorporate visual aids, hopefully, everybody here recognized there's a lot of graphics now where there weren't before, and clear, concise tables. And we wanted to modernize terminology and definitions. You may remember I brought up, our current zoning ordinance has a definition for hog farm, but it doesn't have a definition of retail or life sign. So we thought, you know, things are a little bit skewed. It's time to bring things in for the world moving forward. The policy goals, housing options, we just recently adopted our housing element, which had recommendations. So again, in, in their effort to help people build generational wealth, in the effort to help people age in place and deal with changing familial situations, in our effort, we had said, you know, hey, the master plan said, let's, let's move forward with ADUs. And we had said, retool is going to be the thing that sets up the regulations, like, let's get those in place. So a lot of different aspects of the housing element, policy goals are reflected in what you see before you in retool. As I mentioned, you know, we don't really have a lot of greenfield redevelopment opportunities. So we're pivoting for a zone, you know, now with infill and adaptive reuse. So this is what you see in a lot of the structural changes, you know, trying to cut out unnecessary bureaucracy, you know, cleaning up and being clear and concise what people can do to help facilitate and encourage people to make the investment either in their commercial or residential properties. Equity barriers, this was, you know, something that, you know, wrongly, candidly, a number of decades ago wasn't a priority. I'm so happy that changed. And that began with our Lake Forest effort, then our housing element, and even into this. And included in your packet is a letter from our ready program manager, because we asked Hazel, please read this from an equity viewpoint. So we were very pleased when she was like, you guys did it, you know, so, you know, good job on that. So what you're going to see is things like old findings have sort of been overwritten to be more concrete and less subjective, which potentially could be used, you know, we went through with a fine tooth comb and dumped all the gender specific references throughout. So it's all these little things that we did to make sure that everybody's getting a fair shake under this, under the zoning ordinance. And lastly, again, sort of tying up everything with the policy is the regulatory processes, you know, we've heard over the years. So the council and the commission may remember, you know, Greg and I came before you, what was it, last July, on the joint work session, asking about how we can clean up minor, minor amendment staff approvals and when to amend an SDP, you know, to try to help facilitate these other greater policy goals. So again, as we go through and as Joe presents, you know, as you think about these things, you know, think about it again, sometimes we'll guide you on which, you know, which goal it's really to do. But I want to make sure, you know, everybody understands this wasn't done just to do. There was thought behind all the changes that came through. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our friend Joe to walk you through the ordinance.
Welcome, Joe.
Hi, thank you, everyone.
Okay.
So I got the fun task of walking you through an overview of the ordinance itself. So as Rob mentioned, you know, we're, we're going out to try and look at it from a very high level. There are some very specific examples that I've included here in this presentation, again, with the intent of talking about the why, right? Not necessarily always the how, but the why certain decisions have been made. So starting off, you can see that we've restructured the entirety of the ordinance into these 16 articles here. I will spare you reading them all. But I will say that in doing this, in this kind of organizational task, it means that every single sentence, every single word within the zoning ordinance was reviewed, was, was analyzed, was debated, was restructured. You know, the, the entirety of the document from start to finish was, was reviewed from that perspective and reorganized in such a way that, you know, we thought made a lot more sense from the realm of view, combining information that was previously disjointed across multiple districts or multiple sections. From this review, you'll see there are kind of three buckets that these, these articles all fit into. So the first are components that were largely retained from the prior zoning ordinance. So when I say retained, I mean, they've been retained from a, in their essence, their, their concept has largely remained the same, but they've been restructured or reformatted for clarity and for, you know, just usability in general. The other thing to note is if an item was not really changed from a policy perspective, that's because through our thorough review, working with staff, we've determined that it met many of the, or all of the policy objectives that Rob previously stated as being part of this effort. So moving into that, the next kind of category of articles here, we have things that were revised from a technical perspective. So in, in this group, you'll see is a large amount of the ordinance, you know, all the zoning districts, parking signage procedures. And these are things where we did a really exhaustive deep dive into, you know, not just the, the content, but how we were sharing it. So, you know, this includes things like, you know, the tables and graphics wherever possible, or even just being able to remove duplicative information across multiple sections of the ordinance. And then the last goal, the last grouping here, sections that were revised from a policy perspective. So you'll, you'll notice off the bat, there's a pretty big overlap between items that were revised from a policy perspective and a technical perspective. But these are the places where, you know, the biggest changes were made to help implement, you know, the, the intent of your master plan, your housing element. Really, you know, a combination of the equity goals are met through both policy, but through this technical as well, in being able to have, you know, more user friendly and useful code for, for all of the citizens of Gaithersburg. So moving on, I'm going to just kind of give the highlights of, in each article, what was changed and kind of what the intent of some of those changes are. So we're going to start here with Article 1. So Article 1 is the introductory provisions, and it was largely changed from a technical language and organization perspective. And this was important to ensure the smooth transition from, you know, the prior zoning ordinance to, to the current, to this proposed zoning ordinance. It's, you know, very important when you're effectively, you know, a whole repeal of your zoning ordinance is going forward, that these provisions are considered thoughtfully for a few reasons, namely, to not penalize anyone who's come before. So this includes things like having continuance provisions, meaning that, you know, when the new ordinance were to go into effect, is put in place, it doesn't kind of retroactively require that anybody make changes to their property or, or do anything to comply with these new provisions. So it's really focused on kind of current property owners and making sure that that's, you know, not penalizing them. Additionally, there are provisions in place for existing applications and permits. So as you all know, there was not a moratorium put in place throughout this process, which means that there are people who have been diligently working, you know, with the city on development proposals under the current zoning framework. So these existing applications and permit language in the proposed ordinance would really allow for those folks who have already achieved a substantially complete application to not have to go back to the beginning of this process. Of course, they can choose if they, if they'd like to, you know, utilize provisions from the new zoning code, but it would not kind of adversely penalize somebody for, you know, not waiting around for the, you know, 18 or so months while a zoning ordinance is updated. On top of that, there's also a number of provisions in this section that are really intended for the kind of non-professional user. So these are really important, we think, from an equity perspective, but also just, you know, to help, help encourage folks to engage in the land use process. So you can see here on the right-hand side is an example of an excerpt from the code. It's a, just a brief section to lay out for the layperson on how to navigate the zoning ordinance. You know, when you open this document up, where do you start and where do you go? Again, this really being about, you know, not as a, as a planner, architect, or an attorney needing to rely on a section like this, but just the average person picking up the document. These types of structural and navigational changes, I think we've peppered throughout the code and really hope that it improves the overall usability for, for everyone. So in Article 2, it's interpretations and measurements. So this section really is intended, I'm sorry, this article is really intended to be a one-stop shop for all rules needed to learn how to interpret the language of the zoning code, as well as calculate all the various dimensional standards. While we try and how our zoning codes be as simple and straightforward as possible, of course, you know, in, in the realm of land use planning, there are still technical terms, there are still technical methods for doing things. And, you know, a really critical part of a modern zoning code is at least having a clear, often illustrated and concise location for someone to figure out how to work their way through that. So some of the key changes to this article, you can see we've added some language to clarify the difference between really basic concepts like setbacks, yards, and frontages, things that could mean the same thing, you know, when you're, when you're talking to someone, they may misconstrue these to be the same thing, but they're regulated in very different ways. Simple, seemingly simple concepts, like the measurement of a building, inclusions of, of graphics in clearer language to be able to explain to folks, you know, how exactly do I measure the height of a building? All of these things are accompanied by explanatory graphics, as I mentioned before, and organized into this, like I mentioned, the, the key kind of simple location at the front of the document, where you're not kind of flipping through a whole host of pages to be able to kind of find the answers to the questions you're looking for. So why is this important? I think it's important because clear rules are easier to follow. It shouldn't be difficult for someone to comply with the rules, and it shouldn't be difficult for an administrator to understand if someone is complying with the rules. Additionally, you know, for the developing community and for businesses, that kind of clarity really just, it helps for them to better plan to make sure that projects as they're going forward are, are meeting the objectives and goals of the project. So I have a few examples in here of things that have changed in measurement. So in this first example here, you can see it's an excerpt from the zoning code on the right-hand side. It's demonstrating how we measure setbacks on a, on a corner lot for a single-family home. Very, very simple example, but one that this kind of very key change could make a big impact for someone who, who may own a lot like this. So in the example where a single-family residence is located on a corner lot, say a homeowner wants to add a small addition, a small expansion to the side of that lot. They have two frontages and they're not really sure, am I allowed to build into, you know, to the side of this, this home? You know, it's front's a street, but it's not the front of their house. So one of the things that we've done through this revised ordinance is actually clarify this provision and add additional flexibility for someone in this situation where it, you know, would be able to more clearly state what can or cannot happen in any given yard or setback for a property. Another good example here, this is a pretty common one, I think, you know, concepts of, of planning that are, you know, just complex by their, by their nature, floor area ratio. Oftentimes, you know, folks in the community will, will, will hear the term, they'll have interest in a project, kind of what is floor, floor area ratio or FAR, but won't necessarily understand the kind of relationships between floor area or a building's height or its lot coverage. So while we haven't done anything to revolutionize the concept of floor area ratio in this zoning code, we did feel we could at least make meaningful improvements through the inclusion of, of graphics to help kind of demonstrate those provisions. So you can see here kind of a step-by-step graphic of a one-FAR building, just showing how that could be organized in four different, four different forms, from a single-story to, you know, two, four-story buildings.
That is a particularly good illustration.
Thank you. Made it myself. Here's another example, as mentioned before, of measurement of height of a building. So say a homeowner is interested in building on a, on a vacant lot, but it has a substantial slope. Well, the zoning code may say, you know, a building can be 35 feet and two and a half stories, but they don't necessarily know what that means when the land is sloping down at, you know, a 10 or 12 degree slope. So the, this article goes ahead and includes, you know, visuals and revised clear language to talk about how one would go about measuring that building, to provide clear, you know, clear standards for how it would be implemented are incorporated into a site. The graphics here on the right, you can also see, you know, this is talking not just about the height of a building measured from the street, but also kind of how you would treat that building kind of across, longitudinally across your site, you know, where, you know, am I limited to two and a half stories at the downhill portion of my site? You know, drawing conclusions that would, you know, visually conclusions that would help clarify that to folks. And lastly, and I think this is another common one that, you know, the average homeowner or property owner would need to encounter. Let's say somebody is interested in trying to make kind of basic energy efficiency improvements to their homes, so new HVAC equipment. Not really sure where they can locate it on their lot. Previously, one might have to go through a series of, you know, four or five different places in your zoning code to, to find the answer to that question. And again, we're talking non-professionals who, who don't navigate it every day. In the revised code, we've taken all of those provisions and we've kind of lumped them all together into one clear section that talks about things that are excluded from measurements, so very common elements like fences and walls, things that anyone could have to interact with in your zoning code, but also things like, you know, bay windows or these HVAC units, where they're allowed to be located and to what degree they're allowed to be located in that yard. So in this instance, the HVAC unit, if you wanted to provide it in your, in your rear yard, you can see it's exempt from, you know, any, any setback restrictions. Again, this is really a usability forward type of change, and one that I think, you know, benefits, benefits effectively, you know, in, anyone who might be needing to kind of make a basic improvement to their property. Okay. Moving on to Article 3. So Article 3 of the ordinance is the standard zoning districts, or the, or the Euclidean zoning districts, or the non-floating zones. And obviously, a lot of changes went into, to these various zones. We presented all of those changes extensively at the prior joint work session. So these next couple of slides are really going to focus more on what changed about the zoning district organization itself and the improvements we think have been made in that, in that regard. So this starts with, with use tables. At the prior work session, we talked about the importance of comprehensive use tables in a modern zoning ordinance. In the instance, you know, how, after reviewing your code and implementing that here, we've settled on a strategy where we have a series of use tables that are kind of geared towards residences, towards non-residential uses, and then towards floating zones. And this really was, you know, while a comprehensive table is easier to understand, if you're a single-family homeowner, you probably don't need to be sorting through the manufacturing district uses. So by kind of bifurcating them, we've allowed for it to continue to group like with like information for use, you know, ease of use in code. It also has another benefit. I think it's really more for administrators and decision-makers in that you now have a place where you can look across a zoning district and you can see how or where something is permitted across all of its similar districts. I think this is very useful for evaluating, you know, the appropriateness of a proposed use when, you know, adjacent to a residence district or, or similar situations. The other piece that happened here is rather than having a whole series of laundry list of uses of every single use under the sun, the hog farm, this also looked at uses and began to group like uses into more consistent categories. So we'll talk a little bit more about that later, I think, when we get to parking and why that's so important. But it really is intended to just ease, ease the administration of the code, but also provide a flexibility into the future, you know, after a development has been constructed. So the zoning districts themselves, all of them are split into a fairly consistent format. So this starts with a, well, clear title of the district and a purpose and intent statement, something that I think, again, for decision-makers is very important to, to have clearly stated in your zoning code. Each district also includes a reference to our use table. Again, rather than having the way that it's structured today, where uses are individually listed per district, it just references back to the appropriate tables. Each district also includes a dimensional standards graphic. So this graphic is associated with the, the following table that we'll talk about in a second. And it's really intended to provide, you know, supplement that information, but also provide an illustrative example of what can feasibly be built within a zoning district. So these graphics are not intended to be architecturally specific. They really are more about the kind of look, feel, density of a district, and then supplementing the information in the tables. The tables yourself, you'll see here, are consistent between the districts. So, you know, every residence district has the same table. They're labeled and keyed to specific elements on the diagrams themselves. And rather than having a kind of long list of standards or, or needing to reference other sections to provide the information here, it's all listed in each zoning district in a concise manner. And while our efforts were to try and unify the structure of these zoning districts, it's also, you know, it's important to acknowledge that there were some elements that were not universal across all of them. So the structure still has it in place for, you know, district-specific regulations. So in this, in this example here, you can see, you know, the, the number of buildings in this, in the R90 zone being called out specifically, or how to implement provisions for the R90 cluster. So again, these were things that are really unique to the district and, you know, shouldn't be kind of baked in with the larger ordinance. And then lastly, within the zoning districts themselves, from a, from a policy perspective, we've provided a quick overview of what's, what's been changed, generally speaking, across the various districts. So the dimensional standards for, for things like height, lot coverage, impervious areas, yards and setbacks, have all been modified to become slightly more flexible. So this, you know, includes things like slightly decreased lot area requirements or yard requirements, and slightly increased height requirements or impervious area requirements. But I think rather than the specifics, which again, we can talk about the specifics of any district in our upcoming work session, we wanted to focus here on kind of why these were important. So first and foremost, the more flexible envelopes are really designed to reduce non-conformances for existing buildings. This is really important from a, from the perspective of equity. It's also really important from the perspective of keeping folks aging in place, growing in their homes, allowing their, allowing a home to grow and change with its occupants, rather than the occupants to have to change their housing situation as, as their lives change. In a, in a situation where we have high non-conformance, it can get in the way of people making very basic improvements. It can get in the way of folks expanding or, or trying to enlarge their home to accommodate, you know, different living situations. And it also gets in the way of the production of, of housing. The other piece that's pretty critical here is coming out of your housing element, you know, the, the need for a more diverse range of housing types. So this is the kind of gap housing, you know, the triplex and quadplex units. While the way that they may be integrated into a neighborhood is very similar to the buildings that may be constructed there today, in order to actually accommodate them, rather than just permit them, zoning envelopes need to get a little bit more flexible. This is just to accommodate, you know, the various different elements that they may need to require on site. And now moving into floating zones, overlays, and special zoning districts. So Article 4 has taken all of the, as I mentioned, floating zones, overlay zones, and special zoning districts, and put them into one concise location. Within that article, some of the key changes are focused around the CBD dish, the CBD zone, where there is an increase in the buy-rite height and removal of certain setback requirements. In the CD zone, where the idea of floor area ratio has been introduced as a means of trying to provide density bonuses to encourage development. The MCD zone, which we talked about at the prior joint work session, is a newly created floating zone, really targeting non-residential uses, really for employment centers. And then within the MXD, simplifying the actual standards for development and making some clarifications specifically regarding open space. The other component of this article is taking these other zoning overlays and, and kind of unique geographies that were previously spread out throughout the zoning code and bringing them all into one, one location. So that's specifically the Old Town and Asbury Special Districts, where they're now brought into the same place that you can find any other overlay-type zoning district. So why this is important, there's a few reasons, but I think the first is through this effort, there's an opportunity, as Rob mentioned, to promote equity through just cleaning up the findings, you know, the information that, or the, the findings that you all consider in your decision-making, ensuring that they themselves do not have any innate bias. Also, through changes in the CD and MCD, it's creating new tools to encourage investment and, and redevelopment in key areas throughout the city. And again, centralizing and defining and organizing all these areas serves certain organizational benefits, not having to be duplicative of things like findings or procedural language, where it could just kind of live one place in the zoning code and be referenced, rather than have to repeat it and add, you know, 20, 30, 40 pages to, to an ordinance. So the CD zone, we'll start here. So the, the CD is intended to serve as a floating zone, to be a more effective and dynamic planning tool along Maryland 355. So we took a, a pretty in-depth look at what was constructed there and, and the zoning in place and, and started to try and come up with some solutions for how we can encourage kind of two things that would spur meaningful and creative redevelopment. So the first is through, both of which are implemented through the use of floor area ratio. So the first is really to try and encourage the consolidation of a series of smaller lots. And this is really just to add the type of flexibility that a site would need to create a more meaningful, impactful development. And you can see on the chart on the left, the floor area ratios are, are stepped, right? So smaller lots under one acre have a lower floor area ratio, which in this case was, was based on analysis that, you know, working with, working with your staff, we've worked through to say, this is what's on average built, so that point five that they are, think you're kind of one-story commercial building. commercial building with some parking wrapped around it, convenience use. And then gone from there and conducted analysis of kind of the scale and scope of the lots that were available and roughly how much floor area they could really begin to produce. So on top of promoting the consolidation of these lots, the second benefit is trying to, through the use of density bonuses, encourage the types of development that I, you know, I think are needed throughout the city and specified in things like your master plan and housing element. So the proposed text that you're considering includes floor-area bonuses for the inclusion of additional affordable housing units, specifically for providing lower AMIs that are currently required by your affordable housing text. It provides density bonuses for larger multifamily units. So this was the unit itself, not the building, right? So the inclusion of three-bedroom units rather than prioritizing smaller units. Density bonuses proposed for the undergrounding of utilities, see a very large cost burden to the city, or just contributing to the city's housing goals through a fund created. Within the MCD zone, again, this is a floating zone intended to provide kind of the design flexibility for redevelopment of non-residential uses. So I think an important element of this here is that it can only be mapped on areas that were previously designated as an employment node in the master planner housing element. And really, the use limitations, as you review the text, you'll see are no residential uses permitted and are really focused towards employment uses as well as some of the retail and service uses that might be kind of key to supporting those job centers. And I know I've gone through every article sequentially so far, but we will not go through every article. So Article V is use specific standards. So this is actually one where 90% of the content was actually retained and just cleaned up for organization, with the exception of the accessory dwelling units text being implemented. So as it's applicable to a wide range of zoning districts, it was incorporated into this specific text. So I don't know that I need to explain why this one is important, but, you know, the language that's in place in this draft code is really intended to provide a framework for how that would, could be implemented on a residential lot. And here you can see just kind of an overview of what the language within this article, specifically for ADUs, is trying, or is proposing to regulate. So it's clarifying the number of ADUs permitted on a lot. It's clarifying that, you know, lots have to be compliant in their size in order to build an ADU, right? You can't just kind of build an ADU on any non-compliant lot. It's clarifying the location and size of ADUs, whether they're kind of integral to a building or detached in a rear yard. It's designating or requiring parking space for each ADU, as well as other provisions related to kind of height entrances and uses for accessory dwelling units. Article VII is our off-street parking and loading article. So this is my favorite one, in case you're curious. The parking article is one where we didn't make a lot of large policy changes, but it underwent a really substantial overhaul from a technical perspective, one that we think helps users across the board, whether they be, you know, single-family homeowners or large commercial tenants. So the article itself was, obviously was restructured, the inclusion of graphics and tables wherever possible. You can see an example here on the right-hand side, talking about the dimensional standards of a parking lot. The parking rates and kind of way that they're implemented was also revised, and I have some examples of that in subsequent slides. Organizationally, we also kind of removed the elements of parking that would impact kind of lower-density homeowners and separated them from the increasingly more complex regulations for larger surface and structured parking lots. And that really is just a matter of, you know, ease of use for non-professionals who may just be looking to add a parking pad to the, you know, side of their home. Another key change to this article was how we've strengthened the findings for the planning commissions, parking waivers. And more so, I think, you know, retained creative tools that you all have in your current zoning code for being able to handle and manage parking creatively, and just tried to strengthen them to make them more useful for the planning process. And then lastly, for larger residential developments, specifically those that would include the creation of new streets or extension of existing streets, the proposed ordinance also includes on-street parking requirements. So this is something that did not previously exist, you know, where the zoning code is typically just requiring off-street parking to be provided. These provisions would also require for these larger developments to have a specific number of spaces that are, you know, provided at the street. So why this is important? The parking rates themselves, I think, are really important to change. And it really just makes it easier for folks to re-tenant existing buildings. If you had a past approval that had a specific number of parking spaces tied to a specific use, and you try and get a new commercial tenant that is not the exact same use, that may have had a different parking requirement, they could feasibly not locate a business in an existing building. So this revised approach would really make it easier for those large commercial tenants to do such. And additionally, the standards are now clearer with regard to the size of required parking spaces, driveways, other dimensions, and garages, things that were not expressly stated in the prior code but are now kind of very clearly both illustrated and demonstrated through the code. So here you can see is an example of how we went around to implement these uses or parking requirements based on use groups. So this example here is for the retail and personal services uses. So you can see that highlighted in red is stating a single parking requirement for all of these uses, with the exception of those listed below. And I think that exception is actually a really important tool, because it means that even though we're consolidating as many like uses as we can into a single rate for ease of administration, we're also still have the opportunity to call uses out that have either higher or greater parking demands very specifically. In this example, you know, I think it's, we would all see that, you know, an artisan manufacturing facility probably doesn't have the same parking demand as a retail store. So we have the ability to still provide parking flexibility for those uses without having to provide a specific rate for every single iteration of specific use permitted in a district. A similar example, you can see here how the proposed ordinance handles parking for large commercial centers. So whereas, you know, previously, one may have to provide parking based on the square footage of each individual use located within a building, and if you had 10, 20 uses in a commercial center, that calculation would need to be made. Whereas I think, you know, logic would tell us that the specific of each use is not necessarily what's drawing as much of a demand as it is the overall size of a commercial center itself, you know, the number of jobs, the number of retail stores that could be provided. So the parking ordinance here breaks these down by size thresholds. And as you can see, you know, as the shopping, or sorry, the commercial centers get larger, so in this case it's 250,000 square feet greater, there's a higher parking requirement than these smaller centers. And then lastly, within parking, as I mentioned before, all of the regulations for structured and surface parking lots, so these are, you know, parking facilities that are not servicing your average single-family home, have been structured and grouped in a way to provide very clear, kind of easy to understand and implement rules here with graphics and tables accordingly. So this section goes through and covers the type and mix of parking spaces, the various maneuverability standards, grading, surfacing, bicycle parking requirements. Also includes language that was, came through members of the advisory committee regarding clarity around striping and signage in parking lots that was previously missing from the code, as well as some rules regarding lighting for parking areas and minor changes to planting and screening for parking areas. Again, you can see here kind of how those graphics and tables are being kind of implemented to more clearly demonstrate how parking spaces should be laid out, specifically as they relate to the type of parking space, the orientation of the drive-ais and such. Okay, Article VIII, signage. So much like the parking article, signage did not undergo a massive policy overhaul, but did have a very substantial technical overhaul. So signage is one of the sections of a zoning ordinance that can often get long in a building, trying to describe things in similar language that are very different shapes and sizes implementations in the built world. So one of the key improvements that was really made here was the inclusion of both explanatory and regulatory graphics in addition to the tables. So you can see the example on the right. I don't know what type of sign. It's a permanent sign, a geographic area permanent sign. We're providing both a visual example of, you know, what that sign might look like, because as you can tell, the title geographic area permanent sign doesn't necessarily paint the most accurate picture, but then provide a detailed table below that goes on to regulate the number of signs, the area of a sign, the location of a sign. Rather than having all that information written in list format, tables are used throughout for each sign type. So this makes it easier to navigate the sign ordinance, obviously, but also makes the clearer rules also allow for the measurement and modern sign types to exist in your zoning code. So for instance, you know, projection signs, you know, signs that are projected onto the side of a building, that may not be abundantly clear to, you know, oh, there we go. The example on the right-hand side. In talking about how that's regulated, it is not a sign type that is widely used, but in this instance, we're providing an illustrative example of it, as well as the regulations around how one could potentially be used. On top of the illustrative diagrams to talk about the types of signs, substantial work also went into talking about how we regulate the signs through the use of these regulatory graphics that talk about the measurement of signs, the location of signs, and really, you know, try and use common language across all the various sign types to clarify that And lastly, through the use of, or incorporation of tables within the zoning code, it's also the opportunity for us to clean up and make it easier to understand when a sign type is allowed permanently versus temporarily, as well as provide kind of concise lists of all sign types permitted within your zoning code. Okay? And then Article 12, permit and review procedures. So this is, I think, the longest article in the zoning code itself, and it includes effectively all rules, all processes, all requirements for every application type that may come before the city for development as per your zoning code. This, I think, was probably one of the bigger lifts from our team's end, trying to make sure that this was presented in a fashion that was easy to use, but also kind of exhaustive, making sure it covered every action that may come before you. So Article 12, again, provides a one-stop shop for all of this information. And in pulling it all together and really going through it with a fine-tooth comb, it gave us the opportunity to make sure that there was a consistent approach to actually establishing each of these actions. So what I mean by that is, you know, if we're talking about the requirements of a site development plan or a schematic development plan, are we using the same language between how we talk about, you know, a site plan or an element of a site plan or a noticing requirement? Are we being consistent in saying who actually has the authority to approve these things? What is the process that one undergoes? It was not always clearly stated in the zoning code. It also gave us the opportunity to incorporate procedures for things that were not listed in the zoning code but are actions that come before, you know, these bodies such as annexations, where, you know, it's obviously only, you know, a private entity is not going to annex land on behalf of the city, but the process for that, you know, annexation should be made clear and presentable to the public. This structure also gave the opportunity to unify and streamline notification requirements, things that were previously, you know, maybe written in five, eight different locations throughout the zoning code to be able to reference them and make sure that they're consistent, as well as the use of tables for the various submission requirements. An example of where this is important is in, say, we have a preliminary and final site plans that both have very long lists of requirements. Through the use of tables, we're able to kind of consolidate that and make it very clear when a specific element or when a specific drawing component, what have you, is required throughout your process. So why this is important? It's clear permit and review procedures provide greater clarity to applicants, obviously who are filing for them, but also to the public on your land use processes, you know, what can be expected, when a hearing must occur, and just creates greater transparency. Through revising the notification requirements, we're able to expand this such that, you know, occupants of the building, not just solely property owners, need to be informed of, you know, changes through the noticing requirements. And then just generally improving processes for anyone who may need to file something before the city, whether they be homeowner, business, or developer. So thank you for bearing with me through that. As Rob said in our introduction, March 11th is the joint work session where we really hope to dive into any specific questions or comments that are raised in our Q and A to follow, as well as providing updates on things like engagement and other public comments received. And then we look forward after that to the public hearing on April 15th. So with that, thank you, and I will take any questions.
Okay, be careful what you ask for. No, this has been great. So let me first commend you, Joe, and staff and everybody, and Frank, I know is back there, everybody who's been working on this. I think this seems like a dramatic improvement over our existing zoning code in terms of its understandability, in terms of its presentation to the public. And I totally agree with the concept that when you give clarity to people, you are helping them comply and you're helping us, if enforcement's needed, it's, you know, these things are clear there. It's helpful on all sides. I think it's pretty, I mean, I even thought the slides here were beautifully done. But my first question is kind of an overview question to you, Joe, as our consultant here. Our other, like, how many other jurisdictions are putting out zoning codes like this?
I will say that there is a recent uptick in recent years, in the last, say, five to 10 years. Most communities are in the exact same spot that you are, where an ordinance was last looked at 50, maybe 60 years ago. There have been patchwork of fixes along the way, only ever to solve the topic du jour, and it leads to that inconsistency that you see across the entire code. I think that, one thing I will say, although not specific in your question, what sets Gaithersburg's code apart is the administration and procedure of this city is, you know, it's complex. And that's one of the instances where I think this code really begins to set itself apart in making sure that all of that was well-documented, things like floating zones, the processes for that, which are not widely used, but are creative and, you know, dynamic zoning tools. I think that was a particularly, you know, a challenging thing to work through from a perspective of making sure it was still useful for you and also fit the other goals of this project from a technical and policy perspective. But I guess, in short, it's a slow trickle of places that are beginning to start to think this way. Even basic things like the inclusion of graphics and tables are starting to slowly work their way in. I will say, prior to being a consultant, I worked for the City of New York where we had exactly two diagrams in our several thousand-page zoning code, so.
To that point, Rob, this question for you.
Sure.
We have, our code exists online in the MuniCode site. Could that even handle the graphics? Do we?
Yes, we're looking, so MuniCode has gotten a lot better. I think what you're going to see at the public hearing is we have to reformat the document to fit the red line paper and, you know, fit the classic underline and all of that stuff. So we didn't want to do that for this stage. We figured it'd be a little bit confusing. But we don't have concerns. We have seen through MuniCode with other jurisdictions, rolling tables, hyperlinks are embedded. A number of years ago, they really started moving forward on incorporating graphics, which was obviously... which was obviously a big priority for us for this project.
Right.
I think we're in good shape.
I'd also just add to that, the document that we've been working on together provides all of the appropriate cross referencing for things like links to be easily implemented. So it's not something that has to come and be added in later. It's something that can be kind of out of the box added to the MuniCode posting.
Excellent, okay. I think, Rob, at the beginning, you said that you wanted to use this session to sort of pinpoint where some, where we can dive deeper into specific changes, right? That's your goal?
Yeah, I think part of it is, Joe's laid out, and we really covered the sections that had a lot of changes, but we presented you the Cliff Notes and the full thing that you could look through. So again, if there's certain things, and we've thrown out some big stuff, you know, the C D zone, you may remember, we began discussing this back in 2017, so moving forward. But if we really want to do a deeper dive, I think it would be more productive to go. Rob, this is a topic we'd like you to bring back on the 11th, and maybe we can explain to you in more detail how we came up with those cohorts or how the bonus stuff. Other things, even as Joe mentioned, one of the changes that came in related to parking is it used to be, you had to put a tree on an island. We're proposing now that you have to have 30% canopy coverage of any surface parking lot. And so that's a change, but that ties into our environmental master plan goals, that ties into our canopy coverage goals. It's a lot of these little things there that, you know, we didn't want to necessarily proffer at this work session, but if there's something that comes up that you'd like to discuss, we can. And I know, obviously, Councilmember McNulty was kind enough to reach out with some questions about height in the C B D zone. So we're happy to explain that a short answer at this meeting, but if you want to do the deeper dive, we're happy to bring it back on the 11th.
Okay, a couple, just a couple of things to flag. Accessory dwelling units, is there, does this represent a change? Because it seems.
So we don't have anything. So the Kentlands allowed what used to be called urban cottages, so that has changed. So we had begun, the first focus groups under the housing element, to explore ADUs to see if there was even a public appetite for it, and there was. And as we presented during that master plan process, we just wanted to get the policy in place that we support ADUs with retool doing the definitions. The restrictions that you see on here are all outgrowth of public input. The requirement of the one all street parking space, that came directly from our focus group with our HOA condo associations and community associations. The 800 square foot for a detached, that came in for analysis because that is the average sizable one bedroom apartment in the city of Gaithersburg. And that's really what an accessory dwelling unit more or less should be. You're not looking to build two structures. Going all the way back, even before we even talked about ADUs, you may remember when we were doing all the regulations for short term rentals, we said, should we ever do ADUs? An ADU can't be purchased or built to be a short term rental. So that carried forward. So we wanted to make sure the policy was already in place with the housing element. It was now time to, through engagement, study, everything else, come up with the codification of the regulations for ADUs.
Okay. And then this obviously is a slight departure on parking requirements. It's a departure from the way that we've done it, as you mentioned. I'm assuming since staff is, you guys are presenting, you're comfortable with this.
Yeah, so a lot of this was an outgrowth. So some of the highlights of parking reflect what we've done over the last 10 years. So we've all recognized like the creation of the commercial center. Commercial centers now just aren't retail. They have office uses, they have assembly uses, they have everything else. It used to be everything was then done under a shared parking chart. And early in my career here, there was actual shopping centers that had to turn away potential tenants because it blew up the space. So really, when you think about, like, when we began with Crown for that 320,000 square feet of various commercial uses in Neighborhood One, we set up a standard. We said one, four per thousand, and it worked out well, and it allows people. We don't want to be in a position that any property, commercial property owner has to turn away a tenant for this. Parking has changed, so that was one. The on-street requirements for retail, I mean, for residential, was also an outgrowth of Crown. If everybody here may remember, was a livability issue. If you have a bunch of small townhomes or two over twos, where you basically only have two parking spaces and you put a bunch of them together, what are you saying? You can't have friends over, you can't have visitors, you can't have deliveries made because all you have are your two spaces. So this is where we sort of said we wanted to see 0.5 space per unit within the same block. So that carried forward there. I think we've carried forward into some other developments, but it wasn't so much a technical parking thing as a livability. We want to make sure when somebody buys in the city of Gaithersburg, they're happy and want to remain in the city of Gaithersburg and not go, I don't have any parking. I've got to get out of here. So that's where a lot of the issues, the simplification of the grouping, just made sense. Some of our things, as we know, it used to be, parking standards were based upon how much parking on Christmas Eve. Well, we've sort of gotten away from all that. So we wanted to have abilities to reduce our impervious surface. We wanted to have the canopy coverage goals. We wanted to get out in front, and while we didn't mandate things such as you must have electric vehicles, we wanted to accommodate that and incentivize it so each EV space, if you choose to do it, counts as 1.5 parking spaces. Post pandemic, curbside management, the drop off, pick off, but pickup are just ubiquitous in every shopping center. So we wanted to get out in front, and again, once again, change the ratio, 1.5. Let's incentivize that if that's the way things are going. So I know I just spoke a lot, maybe more than I needed to, but these are sort of the things with each of these articles that we sort of went through. And when we're drawing on experience, focus groups, or just studies that we've done, what's actually out there has sort of come up.
I got it. I think to some degree, I just wanted to hear you say that because you're the professionals and you're the planning professionals and I'm not. And I appreciate the thought that's been put into it. You know, I'm gonna, to some degree, rely on your professional opinions on the best approach to parking.
Could I get that comment submitted? Because the rumors will come out in a search on the line.
Who wants to ask questions next or make comments? Jim? Oh, okay. We'll do Rob first. Jim, you always.
Jim goes first.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember McNulty. So this is a monumental work product, and it's clear that the passion is coming through for the comprehensive solution that we were talking about when we started this process. The one, and we'll have a lot more to say going on, but the one thing that I've noticed here and the one thing that I talked about when we started down this process was, I think, simplification, making something more friendly for both residents and the community, pulling down hurdles where we could, but also keeping in place appropriate mechanisms to allow for control where warranted. And so that's where I think I would like to hear a little bit more come March 11th and beyond is, for example, as I mentioned, parking, hot button issue. Accessory dwelling units. I'm not philosophically opposed to accessory dwelling units, but I'm hesitant to have a one size fits all across all of these various disparate zones. And so I'd like to hear a little bit more about how we think that's going to be workable within the construct of the context in which applicants will be coming in to apply for such things. The pictures are great, and going through those kind of illustrations, I think, will help. As Councilmember McNulty had mentioned, I think to you, Rob, as you indicated, we also discussed it a little bit, is the notion of by right. I think when you're pushing, when you're expanding the scope within a certain zone, I think is appropriate. When you're pushing the envelope in certain areas, we have to have more discussion. So I think when I first, when we first had this, I mentioned perhaps the use of more conditional uses. And so I saw from the chart that perhaps conditional uses aren't as prevalent within the code, but I see them as kind of a mechanism. And Rob, please feel free to contradict me a second.
So one of the things, real fast, just to let everybody at the dais and the public know, we did do a substantive switch. So anything that the council decides, we have done away with special exception uses, and they are all conditional uses now. And the reason for that is there was a regulatory disconnect. It's very hard. We didn't want to put the council in the position to potentially approve a use at an S D P level that the Board of Appeals has final decision upon. So now this carries through. So stuff that was a special exception in the floating zone is now a conditional use because if the council so chooses to approve that use at S D P, they also get to approve the conditional use.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's the stuff I want to dig into, is kind of on the fringe of the envelope where I think appropriately our discretion lies in ensuring that what comes into the community is not conflicting with other areas. It is, you know, meets kind of what our vision is for the community. Whereas by right is like that, in my view, that meat and potatoes core of yes, that we'll put those in place and it'll streamline procedures, but the further afield you go, I think there needs to be more review, I guess.
So you've mentioned ADUs, some aspects of parking. Is there any other aspect specifically, you are the other members of the council, I think that would help us better prepare, basically, because we have to get everything together in a week. So to go through and try to guess, is this what Councilmember Woo was interested in?
I think the other one is exactly, Jim will mention it, Jim has mentioned it, and I'm in full alignment with him that.
So height in the C B D?
Yeah, so making sure that we have, we're fully thinking through the implications of what is out there, us. I'm sure you are, but making sure that we're thinking through as well. Another concept I wanted to throw out there, and I've discussed this with a few folks at the dais, is with respect to the processes in the C D and C B D zones, and in particular, the example I think of is the Park Avenue and Brooks project, Brooks Avenue project, that never came back to the council for review. And I realize that's because of the streamlined procedures in that zone. In my view, changing from low density housing to high density multifamilies is a fundamental change to the use in that area. And that type of thing should come to the council for at least, and I'm trying to think of the mechanism, and the best analogy I'd come up with is giving kudos to former Councilmember Schlickding and his courtesy review process that we've been utilizing. I'm trying to think of some mechanism that allows the council to have some oversight over those types of fundamental changes.
So C B D is the only floating zone that doesn't come before council. We did not change that. So the way it operates under retool is the same it is operated since it was first put into place. That is not to say that this is not an opportunity, should the council and planning commission so choose, that this floating zone become more in alignment with the other ones and council be the final arbiter. We're fine with that. We just need the guidance and to make sure there's consensus from the dais, this is the direction you want us to go. We can make that change. I don't know much more that we can talk about on the 11th related to that. It's just, again, that is the process that's been in place. It's one of these weird zones that even though it's floating, it functionally acts more like a Euclidean zone.
Because of an approved master plan. Because of an approved master plan.
Well, even before, before the 2012 plan, it still had the same sort of processes. We just laid out some more restrictions. So again, we're happy to explore that if that is the direction heading into the public hearing, to make that change.
Maybe a footnote to go with your comment would be, that's also a good example of where it was a case study in whether the master plan really held water for the true vision of what was in there. Because remember, it laid out the framework for that to happen in a way. So to a certain extent, you may not be able to go against the master plan directly. I mean, there's obviously, oversight's a great way to put it, but on the other hand, maybe that's also an example of where we're relooking at some of what the C B D in particular, you know, might, again, it's a case study, what might be some unintended consequences or some things that might need to be relooked at for a master plan amendment.
I think where I'm going to go, just so we can.
As opposed to.
I think what I'm hearing is we need much more, a bit deeper dive discussion in C B D in particular, you know, related to the changes being proposed as they relate to the master plan currently on the books and just as process. We're happy we can get that.
Thank you.
Agree. Jim, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will start by saying there is a lot of great stuff in here. I agree with the mayor, making it more easy to use as a layman is incredibly important. The tables, the illustrations helps tremendously, and I think that's going to be a big help to everybody. I love the idea of FAR bonuses in the C D. The one thing that I will mention is, you know, the C D is obviously the 355 corridor. We already have a preponderance of affordable housing on the east side of the city, so this doesn't do anything to increase affordable housing on the west side of the city.
Yes, that is correct, but I think this was an opportunity, we're the only one where we're really using F A R with the bonuses. And to sort of clarify the note that we put, as you remember, with the housing element, the group identified as being the most in need is 40% AMI and below. So that's what this bonus is about. We know from the vision data analysis, we know going forward, the areas that are ripe for redevelopment, the bulk of it is going to happen on the east side, and odds are it's going to be multifamily rental. So what we wanted to give a bonus for is not that you have to do additional affordable housing, but of the required 15%, 7.5% has to be offered at 40% AMI or below in order to get the bonus. So this is a sort of achieving our policy goals within the existing framework of our affordable housing ordinance, especially recognizing the realities.
And this is separate from the current exemption for the affordable housing requirement in the Old Town Enterprise Zone.
Right, understood, okay, thank you. No, I think utilizing the B R T for that is a great idea. I will say that the, and I sent a note about this as well, that the initial layout of saying, here's how you use this, step one, step two, step three, I read it 10 times and I was getting lost. So I think there's just too many circling back of, you know, do this, do this, then once you do that, I think we can just simplify that language a little bit to make it a little easier to use. I literally 10 to 12 times, like, all right, why is this so hard to me? So I appreciate your looking at that again. Getting to Article four and the Central Business District and the Old Town Special District, I appreciate that we can look at that more closely. My concerns are primarily, A, going from an area that was, by its Old Town master plan was originally intended in that three to four story max, then we added the C B D zoning on top of Old Town, and now we're going up to six by right. And I look at something like the Park Avenue project, which was originally, came in at five, there was objection, they brought it down to four. If this were to change, I could see them wanting to bulk it back up. Having that by right in that space is a challenge. I mean, even if you look at the master plan from 2003 and looking at what's considered Sector Four, you know, that was never intended for that. It was a smattering of some of those higher heights. There are absolutely places within the Central Business District that I could see six stories working, but to Councilmember Woo's point, to have just by right up to six in a place where you currently have two, I think is problematic. So whether it is adding a special condition or something that triggers an oversight where we can say, you know what, that's too much to go from here to here, or we figure out, you know, we've talked about this since I've been on the council, it's probably time for another Old Town master plan and getting a consensus of what makes sense now, because we've lost our transportation dollars for Mark. So, you know, trying to make this the transit that we all want it to be, we could be stabbing ourselves in the foot, or shooting ourselves in the foot, because traffic is already a challenge. And I know one of the conversations that was already happening around Park Avenue was, are we going to do a small traffic study or a large traffic study? And then if we're talking about going to six stories, like, I would love that, but does our infrastructure, in places, I would love that, does our infrastructure support that? Can we actually make that work? So I think this might not be the mechanism to have that conversation. It just might be premature to try to force that versus taking that step back and saying, let's revisit the Old Town master plan and look at what makes sense.
Totally understood, and as we mentioned, we're prepared to come back the 11th and discuss. I think all three of us here clearly hear what's coming from the dais, so we're not here to argue. I think what we're going to do on the 11th is explain to you why we made this proposal as relates to the Old Town master plan. Again, as I mentioned in the beginning, we want to get this zoning done because our next. to get this zoning done because our next effort, you know, mid, you know, September 1st is me and my team begin working on the next land use element and transportation master plan. We are in agreement, there is large sections of the Old Town master plan that need to be revised, we don't need to redo an Old Town master plan, so much has occurred that, that fulfilled, you know, the previous Old Town master plan, it's really looking at stuff, much as we did with REtool, and bringing some of those recommendations to recognize the world of today. So, we understand, so our goal is, again, for the 11th, council member Woo, let's talk about, you know, if there's ways you want us to revise process to more align with the other floating, specifically related to council member McNulty's comments, we can explain why we made this recommendation on the height, and, you know, again, if the direction from, from the dais on the 11th is remove that, we don't have a problem. Again, you know, we knew this was, we hoped it was as close to a perfect document as possible, but even we identify, you know, some minor tweaks that we're going to be also mentioning on the 11th, so we're fine with that.
Just a couple more, I do have some concerns on parking in general, I did notice some of the parking requirements for multifamily buildings being reduced, for example, a two, a two-bedroom going down to 1.5, I think was the requirement, what page was that? I can send you all of these and we can have a larger discussion on the 11th.
I, I think for the purposes of the 11th, as I mentioned, to help us, so we're not guessing, if there's specific sections you know, so if it is multifamily parking, and luckily enough, we have a planning commissioner who does that for a living, so he can opine on whether or not our parking ratios may or may not work. Again, we just found a lot of times, what we're seeing just in general in the market is, things have traditionally been way overparked, even though we are still a single occupancy vehicle trip dominated community, again, the question becomes, do we need to maintain these ratios?
Understood, and then, there's a couple of odd things, like, and I'm just going to throw it out there and I will email this to you, but packet page 121, with parking of light commercial vehicles, how, how would that jive with common ownership communities that restrict light commercial vehicles? And that might be something we can dive into.
I'm going to.
Ah, that's why I go first.
I was trying to get to the correct page.
That's right.
Thank you.
And like I said, that doesn't have to be said, it's just one of the.
So where this is coming, this is an outgrowth, the county just recently passed this legislation, so this is partially an outgrowth of what we're seeing in common ownership communities, where they prohibit this stuff, and as we remember, many number of years ago, I know the mayor does, the issues related to Victory Farm Road, pushing these vehicles out, we want people to work, you know, if they're working, if they have a truck, you know, the county amended this stuff to clean up, to allow, you know, people to bring their work trucks home without, you know, complaint. Zoning is separate from HOAs, we don't enforce HOA documents, common ownership communities is there, we only look at zoning, so our zoning applies to all the neighborhoods, and then if an HOA or a common ownership community wants to be more restrictive, that is the community's wish, we don't enforce that. What we wanted to set up, though, was to remove visual clutter, sometimes we've seen, because we've heard about things where people have two or three, you know, disabled boats sitting in their front yard on their driveway, you know, so we wanted to take care of that. We wanted to make sure that light commercial vehicles, you know, your work van or something, you have the ability to park it there and you're not going to be forced out or forced to go on the street. So, again, this is sort of aligning with, with what the county just passed about six months ago, so we wanted to get out in front of that. The HOA document, I think Tom will be able to say, I know, I think there's been discussions at the state level about, you know, giving, you know, maybe taking some of that power away from HOAs where it's forcing working families to not be able to park on their own property, and forcing them out onto other streets or into other communities, so it's all there, but that's the background for this. We were trying to address some specific problems, we worked closely with neighborhood services in crafting this language, and coming up with some definitions, so it's really, once again, reflecting the world as it's operating today, not this idyllic vision of how it should work.
So I think it might be helpful to dig in a little bit on that, because having, several of us being former HOA board members, knowing that even on city streets, there have been occasions where HOAs have tried to override what the city would consider a commercial vehicle versus what their documents are considered.
I'm happy to have this discussion, but I want to be upfront, zoning doesn't address that, you know, zoning's not going to address that, the HOA covenants is private community thing, we don't have say over that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the presentation, this is chock full of goodness, so way to go. Couple, I want to associate myself particularly with the CBD zone and, and the general height requirement, so I won't reiterate, but I would just want to include myself and look forward to those deeper dives with ADU as well. One question about ADU, Rob, you commented that there was an appetite for, was that a wide representation throughout the city, was it in?
So, a number of years ago, when our former director, Mattson, was here, you know, we had taken a poll, you know, we had done a survey and it blown up, and, you know, everybody hated the idea. Obviously, the world has changed, so as we began the housing element, we brought this forward, both in our community, engage, you know, wider community, but then specifically in our community focus groups, which is comprised of HOA presidents, condo boards, community, you know, for those that don't have HOAs, but a community organization, you know, speakers for that. And even some people that previously had been against, now are understanding the economic realities, they have college students, you know, moving back home with them. One person mentioned, you know, the house themselves, the primary principal structure's too big for her and her husband, but it's the idea if she sells, she can't go someplace else, and she's built, you know, a 20-year, 25-year life here in Gaithersburg, so an ADU in some ways would allow her to downsize on her own property while still generating income by renting out the principal structure. So, there was tons of feedback, I can go through, you know, what comments we had in the housing element record, but again, sort of, this is why we made ADUs an emphasis related to the housing element, to make sure the planning commission and the council were on board from a policy level, so it was just working out the details. And again, a lot of these details are a direct outgrowth of the input we received from the public, we weren't, we weren't treating this like an academic nationwide exercise, ADUs are great, so you can do whatever you want, and there's no restrictions, we didn't want to say that. So to council member Woo's thing, you know, while they're allowed in every Euclidean residential zone, that's really not the reality, because we had that little bit that says, you still got to comply with all the other parts. So if you're in an R6 neighborhood with a small house, outside of converting your basement, you're probably not getting an ADU, you're not getting a detached one, because you still have to meet all the other dimensional restrictions. So, you know, we'll be happy to sort of walk through the nuances on the 11th, the ADU, but again, I just want to emphasize, you know, what came out of here, really, this is one of the ones that really came out of public engagement, you know, what came out of this.
Okay, thank you. Also, kudos on the combination of environmental and parking, so way to go looking outside of the zone and, and pulling that in. And lastly, way to go pulling in Hazel on this, congratulations.
Hazel was a big help to us in a lot of things, and, you know, while we're here, because I know he's here, Frank Johnson was, was awesome.
Fantastic.
Frank, you know, before we brought this forward, you know, reviewed the entire document by himself and commented and, you know, made changes, so between Hazel and Frank, you know, we wouldn't have felt comfortable doing this work session without their, both of their input moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
So I'm just wondering how you managed to keep busy during this process? All right, obviously being facetious. So, one question I have as an EV owner is, what are we doing in the zoning to encourage and incentivize charging abilities? I know there's some incentives here, but looking around the city, there's, in fact, it's actually impacting the growth of EV sales, which is really important environmentally, because people are worried that they're not going to have a place to charge their vehicle.
This was a gigantic discussion with Joe, Greg and I, and where we landed was, we wanted to incentivize it, but we can see, as Tom can probably attest now, the laws at the state level are continually changing, so we didn't want to start requiring something that's so fluid right now. There's already state laws in place and laws in place under the building code, that if you put it in residential, you have to do X, Y, and Z. So we figured, you know, the state laws will eventually shake out, and again, while we're hoping by and large the bulk of REtool lasts, you know, another 60 years, there's always going to be text amendments, so as situational changes, especially from a regulatory standpoint at the federal state level come in, they're going to be, have to be reflected here. So we felt the best way to encourage this was to sort of give the bonus on the parking spaces and make it worth 1.5 as opposed to 1, on, on the commercial front. We're really not going to opine on the residential side, because that's sort of being handled by state law, you know, state law now requires multifamily, has, I believe, has to have EV ready. I know there was a lot of pushback on a bill last year, requiring it, retrofits of single-family homes, it's not cheap, you have to, you know, do a new panel, you have to set up this stuff, and, and as you're sort of alluding to, I read an article today, probably as you did, you know, once again, inventory-wise, it's only 7% of, of the entire fleet in the US, so, you know, to begin adding additional costs, which goes back, as council member Henderson and I have talked about during the housing element thing, it's not just affordable housing, it's housing affordability, so where can we find ways to not unnecessarily increase costs on housing? This was one of them. So, while we sort of sit back and we wait to see, and that's not to say we may not change in the future, we want to encourage it, we want to incentivize it, but we don't want to require it.
Okay.
I just, to that, the, the 1.5 parking spaces per electric vehicle that Rob just mentioned for commercial uses, it's effectively, you can think of it this way, it's a, a parking reduction for the inclusion of, you know, installation of EV spaces, is another way to consider that. So, again, it really was about the incentive approach, to be able to provide two park spaces instead of four, right? It's to have that incentive approach is really kind of where, where we landed instead of the requirement.
Okay, and I'm all for incentives, so that's, I'm good there. I was also, I was, I at first did a search of the document for tattoo and then realized that it comes under body modification, which is a much more frightening title for it, but, you know, based on our conversations previously about that, I think relaxing the regulations and allowing that in more parts of the city is, is sensible. I think that's it, I may, I think there was something else, but I'll come back to it if I remember, thanks.
Jamil.
One of the beauties of betting cleanup is I can take credit for all the good questions that were asked. Mine's just a clarification, channeling, former council member Spiegel, for the benefit of the pub, public. Jim talked about HOAs or common ownership communities, so when you talk about ADUs, the sizing requirements, parking requirements, nothing would stop a, a common ownership community saying, well, we would prefer two parking spots, right?
That is an excellent point, and not to cut you off, but to bring it, you know, to life, that's what, how short-term rentals and home-based businesses.
Right.
In fact, Crown precludes the home-based businesses. Our zoning ordinance says, you know, if the community allows it, here's, here's the requirements you need to do, same thing with short-term rentals. We heard from plenty of communities after we passed, you know, that, those laws and those regulations, that communities on their own decided, we're not going to allow it. So, ADUs is a similar thing, while, you know, we can allow it in every zone if it meets all the dimensional requirements, there's nothing to say a particular community can't make a decision on their own to preclude it.
So those common ownership communities still have those tools available to them to tailor dissolutions they've seen, you know, be appropriate for them.
As of this work session, we don't have anything on the books that allows us to steamroll our HOA and condo association partners.
Much to our chagrin.
Thank you.
Neil, you, I'm going to come to you, John, Neil remembered his question.
Yeah, so, some, some, many years ago, it seems, before COVID, we had a visioning exercise, and we came up with some conclusions and some data, and I'm not sure I see a lot of that reflected here, I know we talked about height requirements being fairly liberal compared to what I see here strategically, looking at the long-term of the city. Am I missing something, or?
Yes, this directly reflects that. The development of the MCD zone is a direct outgrowth of the growth sectors that were identified in that visioning data analysis. That visioning data analysis also recognized that the bulk of redevelopment opportunities were going to be along with Frederick Avenue corridor, that's why we've pivoted to a new way to try to encourage that, because everything we've done previously hasn't worked, so it's trying to capture that. That includes doing away with the arbitrary height things, you know, what we clearly heard from council during the visioning data analysis is, we shouldn't be afraid of height anymore, so this is why we're trying to do things, especially since with all the other regulatory requirements, in order to hit the densities and make things scratch, we've got to go up, we shouldn't be capping stuff in the, at the corridor at three stories. So a lot of the stuff that came out of this, just what we heard, related to the travel stuff, all the transportation stuff related to that, you know, these new parking ratios is meant to sort of address that. So I would challenge that this very much reflects a lot of the things that came out of that study, and as we mentioned, you know, all that data will be revised to more current stuff before we begin the next land use element, but by and large, we don't see a lot of change in these substantive facts, you know, the property, age of properties are still the age of properties. The need, you know, council made clear to us that, you know, the goal is to still be, you know, not solely a bedroom community to another jurisdiction, but, but to be an employment area, and employment doesn't mean just 15-hour, $15-an-hour retail jobs, it means all these other things, so we're trying to protect all that through these zoning tools. Master plan's going to put stuff in place, but, you know, we, we went to the well and wanted to make sure we hit all those, because those are our policy goals, along with our strategic plan, along with our master plan, was a lot of the findings that came out of that study in 2019.
All right, that's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
Okay, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and, you know, I'll echo what everyone else has said, which is, what a remarkable document this is, and even if it's current form, we can nitpick a few things, fundamentally, though, what a, what a huge leap forward for, for the city in administering the zoning ordinance, so here's my nitpicks. So in the parking calc, and we've had this conversation at planning commission meetings, the somewhat voodoo-like nature of some of the ratios and some of the calculations, and I think it'd be good to come back with a little bit of a data-driven basis for what the ratios are, because there's other things in play, like distribution, you know, you, you could say they only need to do one space per 350 square feet, but if it's all behind the building, you know, do we really give them credit for that? I mean, there's sort of that, that component. There's the other where, for example, in your, kind of breaking down a commercial, you know, centers, commercial centers, you know, it gets better the bigger they are, and so it goes from being one per 300 to one to 400, or whatever it is, but when you think about it mathematically, from one per 300 to one per 350, that's a pretty subtle difference.
You had it reversed, though, the smaller has the, the four.
Yeah, well, exactly, but I mean, the differences, though, in the total number of spaces, regardless of which way you're headed, is kind of a subtle difference, so if there's something more empirical that really drives that, because, you know, we'll, we'll be in a position to talk about a small adjustment, whatever it might be, and it would be good to know if that's really based on, what it's based on.
So I can tell you at a high level what it was based upon, a lot of this was focus groups, so anything that was related to life science and research, we met with ARD and others, and they gave us. For the commercial center parking lots, we met with Federal, we met with SLA, we met with Peterson, and got their input on the ratios. For the multifamily, we got it from our multifamily builder focus group, so we wanted to make sure that the industry practitioners, that we weren't just coming up with.
Okay, that's a great point, and that's fair, but I also know for a lot of those people, it's rule of thumb, it's not really audited data, you know what I mean? It's like, ah, you know, we've been doing this for 20 years, this is what we like to do, and they'll tell you that, right? I mean, if you really push them, but there, but there could be better sources for that information, and it matters, because it means how much asphalt we're going to put down, or how much parking is going to be available for, for folks that want to stay in the centers. That's all I'm looking for, just sort of.
I, I got you, and I'll be upfront, it may be a challenge for us, because everybody here is dealing with that, because you have, you know, nationwide standards, but all parking's local, and even Montgomery County's had a problem, they've been trying to do a study to try to tweak the parking ratios for Montgomery County for a number of years, so this is why we defaulted to the focus.
But even if there's something in the description that acknowledges it's anecdotal or it's practiced, or whatever it might be, and it may not be based in heavily audited or heavily surveyed data, that's okay, too, but let's be clear about that, so that when we're challenged on the counts and, and people look for an adjustment, it's, you know, we can be, we can be fair about it.
And I would like to make note, this parking chart, especially is really only applicable to the Euclidean zone, so the floating zones, we've written in that all the floating zones now function like MXD does, and when they come in with an SDP, they get to propose the appropriate parking ratio and have to provide the justification to council and planning commission. So, you know, so the ratios really are only in play for C2 properties, I3 properties, things like that, anything that's MXD, CD, future MCD, all of that, will be going through, as, as Chair Bauer mentioned, you know, justify, justify your request.
That's fair, but also keep an eye on distribution, too, because I think there's something to be said for that.
Okay.
I don't mean to draw this out, I'm sorry, the next one is kind of broadly the signs, two areas of concern, when we talk about interior signs and they're 12 inches from the window, I do have a concern that we're, we're careful not to have de facto exterior signs, because they're so bright and they're only 13 inches from the window, that they're, they're operating as, as an exterior sign, you know, without being specific, there are examples of that, but the other piece to that is, if we have a point of view on lumens or brightness of signs, this beyond just the kind of vague statement about that they're not unsafe, but, but there's something else there, maybe that can be quantifiable, and... And the, the growing use of internally illuminated facade treatments that kind of look and feel, in fact, they're manufactured by sign companies, but, but we don't count them as signs. We count them as like something else, architectural or something.
Yeah, we made that change because we had issues going back where under the previous sign ordinance before we overhauled it, those were considered signs and we were in fact, you know, sort of, you know, angering some of our, our business owners.
So to be clear, I'm not proposing, I'm not proposing a solution, but let's just make sure we've looked at that carefully and we're not through an interesting loophole providing really large signs by virtue of being able to illuminate your, internally illuminate your facade. Love the term artisan manufacturing. I, I hope we can like show a bunch of those. I think that is just, that's out there, right? The last thing, and this is an example, not to pick on this one thing, but I want to make sure that going forward, in the CD zone, when you were making the presentation about assembling smaller parcels and trying to incentivize that, incent that, you said that's the purpose of the CD zone is to try, it actually doesn't say that in the purpose of the CD zone. So watch for things where we really truly want that to be a part of the purpose and, you know, that's just one small example, because I think it really goes a long way in kind of setting up, setting up expectations when you get, when you get projects in here. The last thing I want to ask about, there was a reference to the historic preservation demo permit process. What happened there?
What do you?
Introducing Greg.
Yeah. The biggest change to it was right now, anything that's 50 years old or older goes before the HDC for a review of the demo permit. We wanted to really emphasize what resources are called out of the master plan as potentially note.
Okay.
And so the change really is it's got to be in the master plan to come before the HDC for the review on, on the importance of a demo where it should be issued or where it should go through the, the further review that, that the council has seen recently on a number of projects.
Okay, thanks.
Planning Commission. Who's got questions or comments, or do you want me just to go to the public?
I'll, I'll just note that this is, you know, I've seen hundreds of zoning and work within them. This is the first one I've actually consciously remember a triangular site code. So that's kind of neat, you know, a little bifurcation of a triangular lot. That's, that's something unique for us, I think, relatively unique. And I just love that light manufacturing goes from nanotechnologies to chocolatiering in the same. It's fantastic. No, congratulations.
There was like a cryptocurrency mining use or something.
Yeah, with ax handle, you know, whittling or something like that, all mixed into the same thing. So that's great. Congratulations.
Just a general question. As you said, it's been 50 years plus since the last rewrite went from hog farms now to data farms. And the fact is that when we do these changes, can you elaborate perhaps on the process of making additional changes in the future? Once this is set down in stone, how would the public understand amending the, the codes in the future with future?
Well, we have a whole section about how to amend a text amendment, so we have that under Article 12. I think this is going to be, and you know, I'll let you speak in a second, Joe. For us, we know there's going to be changes over time. So we, but as I mentioned, you know, we wanted to have this as complete as possible. We can't foresee the future. If we had started this effort in 2018, we never would have predicted the pandemic and the impacts that would have had. So I think going forward, much as we've always done, we want to keep the public informed about when stuff comes up. The process is now laid out so the public understands how a text amendment would be done. And, you know, candidly, I'm hoping we don't have to do any before I retire, so.
I just add to that, not from the, the process of how it could be amended in the future, but the approach to writing it now to ease its future amendment.
Right.
One of the, the big shifts that happens in kind of modern use tables and modern use definition is to move away from the extremely specific hog farm into the more general term with a really robust definition of what that use is. So that way, something that we, none of us here can consider today, in the future it may come to you and you can, you can read a definition and you can say, oh, well, this is, this is defined by that. It's, maybe it wasn't its intention at the time, but, you know, it, it is a, you know, service-based retail use with, you know, whatever that may be. So that, that doesn't necessarily, you know, 50 years from now, when there's, you know, it's teleport facilities or something, it's, we don't have that written in just yet. But most of those kind of incremental improvements can really get picked up by just well-thought-out definitions.
To build off, Joe, we really wanted to take advantage of the definitions. So as you go through the glossary, what you're going to see is terms that aren't necessarily listed elsewhere, but they're important to have, terms like vertical mixed use. This is something that the council and the planning commission are going to be dealing with with various plans. So we no longer wanted to use terminology through a site development plan application review process and use terms that weren't defined. You know, that, that creates the schism. So, you know, the chair brought up and Commissioner Hopkins brought up, you know, artisanal manufacturing. Well, outside of a parking thing, it's really not talked about because it is, you know, a subset of retail. But we wanted to really, and I think that's going to be a nice pivot that we have with this as new things come up. If it doesn't necessarily require regulatory restrictions, it may just be as simple as a text amendment to add a definition.
Thank you.
This is covered under another section.
Good.
Phil?
I think, I think the benefit of batting super cleanup is that everybody else has said all the great things I was going to say. No, I think it's a fabulous, fabulous document. I've got a probably half a dozen or so really nitpicky, wordy, technical things that I will spare you the, the reading. I'll shoot them over to you guys in an email. The, the one thing that may border on policy is under the site lighting section, there's a list of all the various types of site lighting fixtures that are permitted, including some really energy inefficient, outdated technologies like high-pressure sodium and other things. Is there a reason we're just not requiring LEDs for everything from an energy consumption?
Do you have an answer to this one?
Or was that, or was that a copy from the previous text version?
We didn't have anything. We didn't have anything before. And this did go through our Department of Public Works, but let's put a pin in that one of the, let me talk with, with them and come back with an answer.
My, my sense is we had to put this stuff because they still exist in certain areas of the city. So, you know, I think we have to gauge what is actually on the land now, you know, much as we said, as Joe mentioned in Article 1, the goal with this rewrite, because we didn't go into a moratorium, we're not going to necessarily say, hey, this law changed, so you got to go back and change your house. You know, all, all this stuff is vested. So I think the lighting may be a situation of that, that there's certain areas of the city. I know from a street light, and Dennis may be able to chime in, I thought as a policy, city policy, we'd want to LED metering for streetlights.
Come on up, Dennis.
The answer to that question is yes, from a city perspective. Pepco is working on that issue too for the Pepco-owned lights. We don't have that many Pepco-owned lights, but they do regionally own a lot of sodium lights. They don't do many halide lights anymore. And again, I think there is a, a question that might be better done at the building permit level to try to gauge that gap of new construction and having somebody have to retrofit their lighting under the zone.
That's right. If it's something that's covered on the, on the building code side, that's a perfectly good explanation.
Okay. All right. Well, this is the time the mayor and council and planning commission like to hear from anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this topic. We ask that you state your name and address or neighborhood for the record. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes. The record on this will be open for quite some time. So if you have, whatever you have, you can submit to us in writing, but please use your three minutes as, as you like. And when, when your time is almost, or when you're down to 30 seconds, the beeper, the timer will beep once, just so you know. Who'd like to speak? Do we have any? Come on up, Jeanette.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Jeanette Rosenbaum, Chair of the Environmental Affairs Committee. I live in Lake Forest neighborhood. I also have a background in zoning permits and ordinances. I just wanted to say I am really delighted by the new requirements for public notice to occupants as well as owners. If previously there was an assumption that owners would pass on the information to occupants, that for sure was not happening. So this is definitely an improvement. For other aspects of this new zoning code, you should expect to hear from your Environmental Affairs Committee. This will be on our agenda in two weeks.
Great. Thank you. And, and great point about the public notice to occupants. That's something I, wasn't even on my radar screen, but I, it should have been, so.
I was thinking it before I read Hazel's letter.
Excellent. Excellent. Do we have any other testimonies here in the room? Come on up, please.
So my name is Patrick. I live on Highland Avenue. You may recognize me from some of the highlight reels of the Park and Brooks hearings. So thank you for your time. So first of all, the document and the work that you guys and staff have done is really great. Just reading through that, I echo the sentiment that this is a slam dunk pretty much across the board. I also echo the sentiments of council members McNulty and Wu with concerns about height in the CBD. Again, I was very involved in the public feedback process for the Park and Brooks hearings, so I appreciate that being used as an example of an opportunity in case study to improve and work on height requirements for that kind of stuff. My primary feedback today is, okay, Article 4, page 73 in the big packet, 31 in the summary packet. In page 31 in the small one, the summary one, not small, it changes green area requirements to open area requirements. So the reason I'm bringing this up, and I know it sounds kind of semantic-y and it's one word, but I think the change from green to open is one I think we have to just think about, and I think we have to be very careful about that, because I think the concept of open space is fundamentally different from that of the concept of green space. And when you think into it, green space does fill a specific purpose. Open space has more of an energy of unused or we're going to do this later. And there are, so it says, open spaces includes designated parks, public and private open space, and active and passive recreation areas. So to cite the Park and Brooks presentations in their first go-around, one of the things that was pointed out was they didn't fit the minimum green space requirement. And they said, well, this part here is green and this part here is green. And I remember the planning commission saying like that, that does not fit the minimum. That is not enough. And I can see a situation where a developer could propose something like that where the green space or the open space is within the inside of their complex and they can say, well, that's open space, so we're good. I just feel like the concept of open as opposed to green is a little more pliable and maybe more manipulatable, if that's a word, than the concept of green space is. So that, that was my main kind of takeaway reading. And I know it's very specific, but I just kind of wanted to take a look at that. I know this is the first time we're seeing, like, we're talking about it. But I think it's worth thinking about and just discussing a little further. Just, I, I think that word of open versus green, I think they're fundamentally different. So thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
May I respond to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because this was intentional. So the definition red is the current definition of green area. So this is what's caused problems when we've been reviewing plans in the past. Everybody assumes green areas to mean lawn panel or trees, when that really wasn't the intent of the definition as it was originally crafted. For the Kettles, it's about livability. It's about open areas. It's about congregation. It's about amenities. It's about assets, but it's also about plantings. To avoid this, that's why we changed green to open to better reflect the definition on record and how it's to be applied. We have requirements under Forest Con and other environmental regulations for true plantings and green areas, and green areas are a part of open space. So this was an intentional move. Again, we didn't change the definition, we just changed what it's, what it's called.
Is the clarify, is the clarify how it was being, how it was intended in the beginning? Okay, that's, that's fair. Let me check on Zoom and see if we have anybody who'd like to. If there's anybody on Zoom who wants to testify, just use the raise hand function and I'll call on you. Going once, going twice, not seeing anybody raising hands. Okay. All right. So appreciate the testimony for both of you, and I'm sure we'll receive more, both in person and, and written. This was a great presentation. I think we were off to a good start and we, and I think you guys have some good direction for the March 11th meeting about topics to zero in on.
And again, as, as council member Wessel mentioned and council member, I mean, Commissioner Wessel and Councilmember Hernandez, if you, if anybody on the dais does have specific